One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Alt?
Here.
Mr. Beistall? Mr. Benz?
Here.
Mr. Calero?
Here.
Mrs. Love?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Polakowski?
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Here.
Mrs. Shipley?
Here.
Taylor Sipas?
Here.
Sage Gwynn?
As this is our reorganization meeting, we'll open nominations for a temporary chairperson to conduct the election for president. Do I hear a nomination for temporary chairperson, please?
I nominate Cheryl Shipley.
Mr. Calero nominates Cheryl Shipley.
I'd like to nominate Gail Rhodes.
Mr. Polakowski nominates Gail Rhodes. Are there any other nominations? We'll entertain a motion to close the nominations, please. Mr. Miller, second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Benz. Roll call, please. Indicate who you're voting for by reciting the name of the individual, please.
Mr. Alt votes for?
Mrs. Shipley.
Mr. Calero votes for?
Mrs. Shipley.
Mrs. Love votes for?
Mrs. Rhodes.
Mr. Miller votes for?
Mrs. Shipley.
Mr. Polakowski votes for?
Mrs. Rhodes.
Mrs. Rhodes votes for? Gotta say it. Mrs. Shipley votes for?
Mrs. Rhodes.
Mr. Benz votes for?
Mrs. Rhodes. And on a vote of 4-3-1, Mrs. Rhodes is the temporary chairperson.
Bring everyone into the nominations for President of the Board for the New Year. Go up in the floor up. Mr. Alt?
I nominate my friend.
I accept.
I'll second the nomination.
Nominate Cheryl Shipley.
Are there any more nominations? I ask for a motion to close. Please have a motion to close nominations? Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
All right. All in favor to close? Please say. Do you have to? David, just aye. Just aye. Say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we will then proceed to a roll call.
Mr. Alt votes for?
Mr. Benz.
Mr. Benz votes for?
Mr. Benz.
Mr. Calero votes for?
Mr. Benz.
Mrs. Love votes for?
Mr. Benz.
Mr. Miller votes for?
Mrs. Shipley.
Mr. Polakowski votes for?
Mrs. Shipley.
Mrs. Rhodes votes for?
Mrs. Shipley.
Mrs. Shipley votes for?
Mrs. Shipley.
Would appear that we have a tie. Mr. Parliamentarian?
You can vote again. Or you can, which I would encourage you to do. Theoretically, you could also, if you vote and you're not breaking the tie, you could defer to another meeting. But I would encourage you to search for a way to break the tie tonight if possible. So if anybody wants to make a speech or say something?
I'm a chicken, you're a duck.
Under the circumstances, I'll withdraw.
For the folks who nominated Mrs. Shipley, well, I guess if you're withdrawing, then I'm not a candidate, okay? So we'd need a motion to cast a unanimous ballot for Mr. Benz. I'll make that motion. Second?
Seconded.
And is that a roll call vote?
No, you can ask for a...
Voice?
Voice vote.
All right, at this time, I'll ask for a voice vote on the nomination. On the motion.
This is to cast a unanimous ballot in favor of Mr. Benz.
All is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Mr. Benz now is the, continues to be President of the Board.
Thank you. Need an election for Vice President of the Board?
Nominate Mrs. Shipley.
Do you accept Mrs. Shipley? Mrs. Shipley, you accept Vice President nomination?
Oh, yes.
Sorry. Any more nominations? Do I have a motion to close nominations? Motion by Mrs. Love? Second by Mr. Polakowski. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes eight to zero with one absent. Do I have a motion to cast a unanimous ballot for Mrs. Shipley as Vice President? Motion by Mr. Alt, second. Second by Mrs. Rhodes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes eight-zero with one absent. School board meetings for the 2015 calendar year? Any questions on those? Do I have a motion to pass? Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second. Second by Mr. Polakowski. All those in favor, say aye. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Board appointment, Legislative Chairperson? Need nominations?
I nominate Mr. Ron Miller.
Mrs. Rhodes nominates Mr. Miller. Do you accept?
I do. Sure, I do. Remind me, because I did this last year, didn't I?
Yes.
Okay. I will gladly do it, but if somebody else wants to take a turn, I'll also gladly defer to someone.
Any more nominations? Do I have a motion to close nominations? Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second.
I second.
Second by Mr. Miller. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes eight-zero, one. Do I have a motion to cast a unanimous ballot for Mr. Miller as Legislative Chairperson? Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Calero. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes eight-zero with one absent. PSBA Regional Cabinet, have any nominations?
I nominate Gail Rhodes.
Okay. Mrs. Shipley nominates Gail Rhodes.
I move the nomination cease.
Second by Mr. Polakowski. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Do I have a motion to cast a unanimous ballot?
Aye. I'm sorry.
Motion to cast a unanimous ballot?
I'm sorry about that.
Motion by Mr. Calero, second by Mr. Miller. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes eight-zero with one absent. Newspaper of general circulation?
It's recommended that the Board designate the Daily Courier, whose office is located at 127 to 129 Apple Street, Conneleville, PA, as the daily newspaper of general circulation, in which district legal advertisements will be placed in accordance with Section 106 of the Public School Code and School District Policy Guide Number Five.
Need a motion? Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second. Second by Mrs. Shipley. Roll call, please.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes eight-zero with one absent. Adjourn our reorganization meeting and convene a special meeting during the motion. Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second. Second by Mrs. Rhodes. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes eight-zero with one absent. Do we need to do a roll call again? Roll call, please.
Mr. Alt?
Here.
Mr. Beistall? Mr. Benz?
Here.
Mr. Calero?
Here.
Mrs. Love?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Here.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Taylor Sipas?
Sage Gwynn?
Citizens comments, please.
Catherine Feike?
I am here to talk about something that is seldom discussed at board meetings, education. No problem can ever be solved until it is recognized and acknowledged. A previous lengthy presentation on Southmoreland School District student achievement was a typical obfuscation of our academic problems and concerns. I like facts, I like truth. These are the facts of our difficulties from official documents of the Pennsylvania Department of Education. Number one, the school performance profile in every school in our district has dropped. Every school scored lower than it did last year. Number two, our high school has been failing for years. First, it was placed on warning status. Elaborate plans were developed, and for the next years, our high school failed, failed, and failed. Number three, our SAT scores are at the lowest level since 1998. Our SAT scores are at the lowest level since 1998. This year alone, verbal and math scores combined dropped forty-eight points. Dropped forty-eight points. For the last available data, one of every four Southmoreland graduates who went to college required remediation in both math and reading. Number five, and this will please Mr. Miller, our last year's graduation rate has decreased. Number six, in the test results, there is an indicator of student academic growth called P-Vos. I'm sure that all board members know what that is, but for the benefit of other persons who don't, this is what it is. A student begins and ends a school year, and the academic growth that occurs during that period of time is calculated. A full year of growth is 100 percent. Our district average is 50. In one year, it went from 71 to below 50 in math, from 70 to 59 in reading, and from 71 to 50 in science. In summary, for every year of education that our students receive, they make about one-half year of academic progress. Number seven, we are spending over $8 million a year to pay for a failing high school. Number eight, according to the famous U.S. News and World Report awards, less than 9 percent of our students are college-ready. We have one teacher for every 14 students, and four out of our, four out of every 10 graduates cannot do math, and three out of 10 have deficient reading skills. As close as I can come, looking historically at curriculum trends at Southmoreland, since the implementation of the infamous Dufour Community Learning Approach, our long-range learning skills have deteriorated. While touting wonderful K-8 successes, its miraculous benefits virtually disappear from ninth grade on. Temporary achievement that vanishes is of no educational benefit. If our teachers would be given the freedom to teach instead of meet, and use the time-proven strategies of a classical education approach, including the undisputed concept of time-on-task, we could once again provide our children with the education they deserve. This untested, flash-in-the-pan experiment has cost our students dearly. It is a price they cannot afford. Where are the proactive efforts of our elected school board? Parents, concerned citizens, where are you? Does anyone care? Because I do. To those who publicly bragged about our high-achieving district, I challenge you to respond to each of my facts with facts of your own. One of us is wrong. One of us is not telling the truth. There is a maxim in the law. If the law is not on your side, pound the facts. If the facts are not on your side, pound the table.
Thank you, Dr. Feike. Minutes? It is recommended that the Board approve the minutes of the November 6th and November 13, 2014 meetings.
Need a motion? Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second. Second by Mr. Polakowski, questions? All those in, all those in favor of passing, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes eight-zero with one absent. Finance, fund accounts?
It is recommended that the Board approve the Treasurer's report for October 2014 and the November accounts payable.
Motion? Motion by Mrs. Love, second. Second by Mr. Miller, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes eight-zero with one absent. Seeing no old business, new business, long-term subs?
We adjourn, recess to executive session for personnel.
Need a motion to recess to executive session for personnel?
And legal matters as well.
And legal matters. Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second. Second by Mrs. Shipley, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes eight-zero, one absent. Second by Mr. Polakowski, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes eight-zero with one absent. New business, long-term subs?
It's recommended that the Board approve day-to-day substitute teachers Leah Hostetler and Cheryl Mashia as long-term substitutes retroactive to the first day of the 2014-2015 school year. Mr. Mash, Mrs. Mashia will be placed at Step M1 minus 5,000 prorated, and Mrs. Hostetler will be placed at Step B1 minus 5,000 prorated, effective immediately, and their salaries are per the terms and conditions of the collective bargaining agreement.
Need a motion, please? Motion by Mrs. Love, second. Second by Mrs. Rhodes. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes eight-zero with one absent. Substitute bus aide? It is recommended that the Board approve Brittany Garaglia, Mount Pleasant, PA, as a substitute bus aide. Clearances are on file with administration. Motion, please? Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second. Second by Mr. Miller. Roll call, please.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes eight-zero with one absent. IU One Agreement?
It is recommended that the Board approve an agreement with Intermediate Unit One to provide Title I services to students of Southmoreland who attend non-public schools.
Need a motion? Motion by Mrs. Love, second. Second by Mr. Polakowski, roll call, please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley? Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Abstain. Motion passes seven, zero, one, and one. Student report?
Congratulations, November Scotty Fowler, the Bus. Congratulations also to the members of Southmoreland students, Richard Leonard. Student Council is hosting Make-A-Wish fundraiser, Pump It Up, on December 23rd at the High School. Over 100 students will be participating. We're also holding a Christmas bake sale on December 8th, December 4th, slash concert. The SHS Winter Concert will occur on Monday, December 8th, 2013, at the SHS Autobody. Performance begin at the SHS Choir, Highland Choir. Following the vocal portion, the concert band will take the stage between five pieces. One of the works, a major work in the wind, band literature Russian Christmas music by Albert Reed. Concert includes the combined performance by SHS Concert Band and Highland Choir. Features a number of teachers and administrators performing along with students. We hope you'll come share in the house of the students and the ethnic communities department and celebrate the season.
For any chess news, we are selling topics covered couples at light of night on Saturday December 6th. And YEA is particularly breakfast with Santa on the Christmas list as well. The Mount Pleasant Area Quiz League competition that took place on November 19th proved to be successful for both varsity and junior varsity teams. Varsity team that included Hudson Nibbleson, Michael Conroy, Veda Farina, Anastasia Polakowski, Cassie Cullen, Taylor Sipas, and Stephanie Wells, playing victory over Jeanette, and came close to the scores of Alberta and Greenberg Central Castle. Junior varsity came out of the competition undefeated, and included the members of Alex Bisotto, Tessa Wilkins, Casey McKnight, Berlin Hickson, Sam Wazowski, Matthew Kinter, Haley Rollinson, and Charles Eckert. Congratulations to the Southmoreland Varsity and Junior Varsity, with team members on the job well done. Special Education Department will be opening a Santa shop this year during the Christmas season. The Santa shop is an opportunity for students in need to shop at no cost for their families, while also allowing the opportunity for the special education students to fulfill their transition requirements. We are asking for donations of new or newly used items, as well as wrapping paper and supplies. Will be accepted donations until Wednesday, December 10th, 2014. Please drop off all donations to the rescue room, or the resource room, 229. We plan to open on December 17th through the 22nd. Thank you for support and participation.
CWCTC report? WIU? Okay. PSBA? Superintendent?
I have a couple of motions that need to be walked on. The first motion that we'd entertain is that the Board approve Zach Donato as Assistant Middle School Basketball Coach, responsible for the seventh grade team.
Need a motion? Motion by Mr. Calero, second. Second by Mrs. Rhodes. Since it's not on your agenda, any questions in the audience? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes eight-zero with one absent.
The second motion I have is that it's recommended that the Board engage the services of Camel Durant, Palumbo Beatty, and Miller to provide legal representation as Special Labor Counsel in collective bargaining matters to the Southmoreland School District pursuant to the terms in the Fee Agreement for Legal Services, which you have in front of you and will be incorporated into the minutes.
Need a motion? Motion by Mr. Calero, second. Second by Mrs. Rhodes. Questions from the public? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Shipley? Mr. Alt?
Based upon our executive board discussions, yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
She passed. Yes. Do you wish to withdraw your vote?
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski? Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes five, one absent, and three abstentions.
And then, just to review a couple of the things that have been happening around Southmoreland, so you're aware of some of the goings-on here. Members of the administrative team recently met with a representative of Westmoreland County Community College to preliminarily discuss and plan for a dual enrollment program and process. We'll bring this to the Board for discussion and approval when plans are finalized. Now, the next item I have, we were recently notified that Southmoreland received a Safe Schools grant in the amount of $25,000 to be used to enhance, update, and upgrade building surveillance equipment. These items are already on order, and installation will begin as soon as the equipment arrives. We hope to be able to complete the installation using in-house staff. I know Dr. Scott and Mr. Pushkar worked collaboratively on this effort, so thanks to both of them for their efforts to get this grant off the ground. Next item I have has to do with budget and finance. When we planned the 2013-14 budget, now this isn't the one we just passed, but the one we passed about 18 months ago, we indicated that we had set aside $400,000 in budgetary reserve, and we also estimated that we would need an additional $554,000 from the fund balance in order to balance the budget. At that time, we stated that we would be prudent in our expenditures in order to minimize the impact on the fund balance. We were able to spend approximately $490,000 less than we had budgeted. Additionally, revenues were approximately $540,000 more than we had budgeted. So what all that means is that instead of taking $954,000 from the fund balance during the 2013-14 fiscal year, we were able to grow the fund balance by approximately $566,000, which leaves us with a current fund balance as of July 1, 2014, of approximately $6.8 million. Now, these figures may change slightly, and I've rounded them off, by the way, they're not to the penny, and they may change slightly when the audit is complete, but we're not anticipating any major changes to these amounts. Our academic leadership team has met several times during the last month to plan strategy with respect to the lack of growth noted last month in our P-Vos results. You might remember that this lack of growth reflected negatively on our school performance profile scores. The December 2nd In-service Day was also spent attacking this problem with our teaching staff. WTA TV's Mike Clark visited Southmoreland Primary Center on November 19th. Our primary center was able to donate approximately $2,100 to Project Bundleup. Representatives of Southmoreland Primary Center will ceremonially present the check to Project Bundleup personnel, and this is scheduled to be televised tomorrow evening, Friday, at 7:30 PM. So congratulations to the students, parents, and staff of Southmoreland Primary Center. That was quite a, quite a collection that they did. Administration conducted exit interviews with fall sports coaches on November 24th and 25th, and we'll be able to discuss those exit interviews with you next month. On November 13th, Dr. Scott and I participated in a career readiness summit with representatives of the other county school districts, business and industry representatives, and the staff of Westmoreland County Community College Advanced Technology Center. We were able to tour the center and learn more about what employers in our area are looking for in entry-level candidates. And if you happen to see the paper on November 14th or 15th, somehow we got our mugs in the paper, so can't win them all, right? The last item I have is Dr. Scott, Mr. Marnell and I met earlier this week with Kathleen Kelly, Dr. Kelly, who's a circuit rider for Pennsylvania schools. She's one of several circuit riders working with a coalition of approximately 50. She's one of several circuit riders working with a coalition of approximately 50 organizations that includes P S B A, PASA, PARs, PASBO, the PTA, and the Pennsylvania Association of Intermediate Units. And all of these groups have gotten together to advocate for a fair and equitable funding formula in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Dr. Kelly's a former reading supervisor here at Southmoreland, and she's been a principal, assistant superintendent, superintendent, and Pennsylvania Superintendent of the Year. We were able to discuss many of the issues associated with the lack of a consistent funding formula, and we will certainly be advocating for action at the state level on this important topic. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Assistant's report?
On the litigation with Scottsdale Housing LP for the tax assessment appeal, the Board of Assessment and Appeals had issued what is almost a no-change situation. There were some numbers that were moved around from one parcel to another, but not a change in the real total of the assessment. I have not received it by mail, but I was looking online, and it appears that two days before the deadline, the property owner filed an appeal with common police court. So I would anticipate discussing that with you at the January meeting after I've actually received it by land mail, as to defending the current assessment rather than the huge reduction that the property owner was seeking. On another item, the, I had a very brief discussion with the county solicitor concerning the Scottsdale Eagles exoneration matter, and the basic situation is that the commissioners are waiting to hear from the land bank as to whether or not the land bank wants to get involved in this before they decide whether or not they want to get involved in it. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Citizens' comments pertaining to tonight's meeting?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Does that mean, I mean, some thought that it may be bought by a private firm? Is that still in play? I'm just trying to read your comments there.
That's the problem. The county has not voted and hasn't put it on their agenda to vote for them to go along with it, because now they want to wait and see whether the land bank would become involved in attempting to buy it.
If the land bank bought it, the taxes would have been forgiven anyway, is that correct,
Yes. But they would be forgiven, but what would happen is, going forward, the assessment, the taxes would actually be lost for a period of years, whereas if a local person, not a local person, but if any private person would buy it, going forward, they would not be.
Right, just the exoneration, though. That amount would be, regardless of whether it is the land bank or a private purchase here, it would be exonerated. If we had not voted to exonerate, it still would be exonerated because the land bank would not be liable to pay those taxes.
The land bank would typically want the taxes exonerated.
Citizens' comments? State your name and where you live.
My name's Jan Kiefer, live the same place, 628 Homestead Avenue, Scottsdale. Referring back to the last meeting, we had the wonderful conditions of the school put forth, and the test scores based on our poverty status, so I was a little bit confused in the quote, you know, it's the best of times and worst of times, an age of reason, an age of folly. But destiny did not make the community visualize that Southmoreland was an inner-city troubled school. I feel that the press was considering all the factors involved, but just, you know, ask her what her message was, and I think it would have been accurate. And I think also the press should have asked Sage when he said that, when he was talking about Jon Stewart, was it, that radicals and moderates, and he said like, they have stuff to do, and people like myself don't have stuff to do. I get them, you know, Sage, today I got up at 4 o'clock, I did my chores around the house, I was at Westmoreland County Commissioners advocating on environmental and police brutality. I went to Pittsburgh, laying on the streets for three hours, went back to township supervisors, and I'm missing a really important meeting tonight about common core.
Let's address the school board stuff. We don't need to address personnel.
I'm missing a really good meeting tonight about common core, but I get the message. Stay home, and so I want to send a message to you. You know, I'm not an authoritarian like you. Next point. I have found a good statistic. Since Columbine, school, in-school arrests went up 300 percent, but out-of-school arrests for the same-age group dropped 15 percent. It shows that, again, what an authoritarian, what a police state the schools have become. And the performance results that we had last week, there's only one performance result that I'm interested in, and that's a five, 10-year-out study of the students. And I've said this before, but I think that's really the only time that you're going to measure it. An exit assessment or test just don't do it for me. And, you know, some of the questions you can ask the kids, and when you're in college, you know, what are your debt, what's your student debt five and 10 years out? Are you working in your major that you went to in college? You know, what about all the sports injuries, the girls' knees, the concussions? So really, retrospective appraisal is the best thing. Three tangential things, I gave you guys a paper on a, it wasn't my source, I didn't fact-check it, but the coal gasification power plant that was proposed for Yukon is moved to, beside the Mendon School at this point, according to the information I got today. 5,000 feet from their school, we're going to have an electric generating plant, off-gassing, and that's down, or, you know, it's not far from us wind-wise, it's going to be right on 30 where the two Yawk schools are. You know, we're going to get the Everson Chemical Plant, you know, we're going to have one of the biggest chemical depots in the four-state area. We've got modern material going into the dump. We, Grupe and I have bought a $3,000 detector, we're trying to get access to go in there to see what kind of stuff is going into the dump. You know, it's an uphill battle, but, you know, I'm just sort of soapboxing here to get your help on that. I think you ought to go down to Mendon, you ought to know what your school's going down there. That political line down the road really doesn't mean that much, and I'll stop there.
I have been informed that the superintendent and the assistant superintendent have openly called me, Dr. Catherine Fike, a crazy woman. First of all, let me tell you how impressed I am that both of you are credentialed psychiatrists capable of rendering a professional diagnosis. Well, perhaps that's not the case.
This is citizens' comments, it's not picking on personnel.
Perhaps that's not the case. Then the esteemed leaders of the Southmoreland School District have sunk to the level of petty name-calling. I am a resident, a taxpayer, and a concerned citizen in this school district, who is nothing less than horrified about the degenerative failing academic program, as evidenced by four failing years of our high school. Since 2010, every student in our high school has gone through a failing academic program, facing the future at a struggling deficit. Apparently, any citizen who has concerns about our school district and is willing to speak publicly will be labeled as crazy. Well, let's see. If someone is concerned about the educational program of our students, that's crazy, but if one is proud of our academic failure, that is sane. Caring about our students, that they are being deprived of the education they deserve is crazy, but doing nothing and, in fact, watching things get worse is sane. Believing that the citizens, taxpayers, and families of our students deserve better is crazy, but seeing them as subservient, undeserving cash cows is sane. Apparently, this is the position taken by our administration. This crazy woman believes that Dr. Scott and Dr. Molnar have reduced themselves to name-calling because they are defeated and terrified to take me or anyone else on who is not a puppet.
All those in favor, say aye.
They have relapsed into intellectual paralysis, afraid to engage in honest debate, productive discussion, and reality-based interactions with the goal of improving our student body. Jack Molnar once said that he was asked how he wanted to be remembered.